... A pleasure to serve in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Good evening, welcome to the January 12th, 2016 meeting of the Rhinebeck Village Board of Trustees. Our first piece on the agenda is a couple pieces of special recognition. Unfortunately, one of our special individuals to be recognized has not arrived as of yet. So I want to start with Pat, our fellow clerk here. Pat recently was recognized as receiving her registration as a registered municipal clerk, which is offered through the New York State Association of Cities and Villages and the New York State Town Clerks Association. It's kind of a joint project. You have to complete education and experience requirements to get the designation. The whole goal of their organization is to elevate the skillset of municipal clerks across the state. And she's also participating, or has participated and will continue to participate in her program through the Municipal Clerks Institute at Cornell University. She's completed the first of three years. She's going to continue, right Pat? So then she'll become, after three years and 120 hours, a couple trips up to Cornell, then she'll be a certified municipal clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So, thank you Pat for continuing to try to improve our processes here. Take a slight delay and wait for our PD to come on in. So Pete to join me up here at the visitor's microphone. So we have a recognition here for Officer Hannenberg. Hannenberg, sorry. I think I might have ended it. I tend to do so. Steve joined the police department in 1985, so he's just completed in December 30 years of service to the village, so that makes him our longest standing employee. He's probably up there at the top of all time service to the village of Rhinebeck. He's still smiling, so that's very good. I tried to, I was telling Scott, I tried to find the headlines from the Gazette advertiser in 1985, but it wasn't as easy as I thought it would be. Poughkeepsie Journal, there was no good news in December of '85, so I'm sorry we couldn't bring something relevant to your starting time. But I can tell you that Mikhail Gorbachev came to power in '85 with the death of the other one. So the world has changed a little since that time, but you have not, so come on up. We want to thank you for your service. We have a certificate of recognition from the village here.
Thank you.
And then one from the PD recognizing your time in service. I told one of the other officers that was commenting, "How come they didn't get anything for 20?" I told him, I said, "It's like social security. You get a little tiny plaque if you want one at 20. You went to 30, you get a full size." Thank you for your service. Thank you. Love to speak for, you know, 20 minutes.
So I'd just like to take a second and thank Steve for his 30 years of service to this community, communities growing up in and lived in. Over the 30 years, you have to appreciate all of the hard work and dedication that's put into the department, and we all appreciate it, especially myself. And I want to thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you. And it's been a pleasure serving the police department. I look forward to another 30 years, but a few more. All right, that's it.
Thank you very much.
And thanks to the other police officers who've joined us for this little recognition. So from there, as always, we're going to go right along to our county legislator, Joel Tyner. Welcome. And Joel, thank you for sending a brief summary of talking points for us as we improve you.
Happy New Year and salute to you, village clerk, and my former junior league coach, Steve Hannenberg, from many decades ago. Congratulations, Officer Hannenberg. I do have some handouts. We're doing our 10th Repair Cafe over at Rhinebeck Town Hall. It's going to be Saturday, January 30th, from noon to 4:00 p.m. And we do not have confirmed the computer repair guy, but we do have the jewelry repair person, Barbara Eichen, Kathleen Everett, and Sarah Stevens with sewing, knitting, needlework, Barry Sherrod, the highway superintendent fixing everything, Ken Douglas, furniture and everything, Chris Louie, furniture and everything. So if it's beloved but broken, bring it on down to Rhinebeck Town Hall just across the street, Saturday, January 30th, noon to 4:00 p.m. Also, if you want to take one of those and pass it on, actually I think Steve Rosenberg and Christina Hudson had brought this up with me about a year ago. Miranda Perry of Oak Street had brought this up with the man. No, Steve Plotnik is all interested in Oberon Kramer Road. And I'm talking about community solar. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago, about 15 people came out, and we're having another one on Tuesday, February 2nd, at 5:30 across the way at Town Hall. What community solar is, is basically a large, finding a plot of land to have a large solar garden or solar farm. And then homeowners, businesses, maybe municipality or two, can purchase solar from that community solar garden, from that community solar farm, that solar array. And these things are already up and running in Massachusetts, all across the country, Minnesota, all across the north, Michigan, et cetera, and the south. And so we're just trying to see if we can make it happen here. So that next Rhinebeck Community Solar Meeting, you can find it on Facebook, Rhinebeck Community Solar. It's going to be Tuesday, February 2nd, at 5:30 at Rhinebeck Town Hall. Meredith Ferber, who owns, I guess, or runs Workers and Dreamers here in the village, she asked me about a month ago, she's like, "Joel, why isn't there a sidewalk from the village to the Stop &amp; Shop?" I'm like, "Okay." All right, so I floated a trial balloon on Facebook. Some people have indicated interest. It's called Walkable Rhinebeck on Facebook. Yesterday, I picked up a rather thick text of, I guess, five years ago, where there was a lot of work done in this room on walkability in Rhinebeck. Actually, today, I went over and talked briefly with the manager on duty over at the Rhinebeck Stop &amp; Shop. I guess they don't own the land there, they rent from a landlord. But I have not yet researched how much it would cost, or if people really want that, but I'm just telling you that I don't think it's just her. There's a number of people, I think, who live over there on Kramer and around there who would love to be able to walk on a sidewalk to the Stop &amp; Shop. Would be nice to get some federal or state or county monies. I just thought I'd put that out there because this is something that a constituent brought to my attention. Just a day or two ago, I actually stopped by to talk to the village police department, and I called a licensing center about something called the Police Assisted, oh, I can't read this correct, Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative, which they're doing in Cooperstown here, they're doing it in Gloucester, Massachusetts. Basically what it is, heroin is a big problem, it's in Ebeneck, all over Dutchess County. One of the kids that I used to tutor, actually, right here in Rhinebeck, has had problems with heroin. Heroin is a problem all over, right here in Rhinebeck. And the interesting thing about the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative is basically, the Gloucester police chief has gotten national headlines for this. He says basically, "We don't care how bad a heroin addict you are, how much heroin you have, you come here, you come to the police station, you bring yourself, you bring your heroin, we're going to get you treatment. There's no blame game, looking down, and people aren't dying anymore in Gloucester." And they're doing it in Cooperstown, they're doing it in municipalities all across the country. I stopped by and talked to the Rhinebeck Police Department. It's one thing for the law enforcement locally or in Dutchess County to say, "We're going to do this," but then we have to make sure that the services are there, that someone who is a heroin addict who comes in to be treated, we've got to make sure that there's treatment for them. So it's a two-pronged thing. There's a woman in Poughkeepsie named Carol Cursio who has a son who's a heroin addict, and she is, we're trying to work on this in Dutchess County, so I just thought I'd put that out there. Somebody here in the village government called me on an issue that I've been aware of. It's not the Republicans in county government, it's actually the Church of the Good Shepherd that just decided after 18 years to not have the Dutchess County Office for the Agent Senior Friendship Center over there. So just so everybody knows, it's at the Lutheran Church out by Rock City, I believe 308. And I had reached out to a minister, the same minister for that church as a minister for the Third Evangelical Lutheran Church on Livingston Street, so I'm glad that's working out. Just a little bit about hoverboards, PIC hoverboards in Dutchess County. I kind of wish that we had an Office of Consumer Affairs. Smart meters are still a huge issue. There are municipalities across the river passing resolutions about the danger of smart meters. Olive, Woodstock, Woodstock, Kingston, Ulster County, we don't have an Office of Consumer Affairs anymore when it comes to the smart meters or the hoverboards. Today, I'm listening to WAMC about all these scams around, so I would love to see, I would love to see an Office of Consumer Affairs. And support also seems to be building to try to bring the county Domestic Abuse Response Team here to Rhinebeck. I tried to do that in the budget season, it failed. The Dutchess County Citizens Advisory Committee on Domestic Violence came out with a report in June saying we should do this, that that DART program should be in Waperville, Rhinebeck, a few more municipalities, not just Poughkeepsie, High Park, Beacon. So that's it. The only other thing I wanted to hand out was, I would love your feedback, constructive criticism, positive or negative, there's a bunch of ideas I have there for 2016. Last but not least, I think what I emailed Pat a day or two ago was about, there might be more money for Rhinebeck to do stuff like a sidewalk to the Stop &amp; Shop if we weren't going to spend, you know, $185, $200 million on a jail we don't need. I'm not going to take anybody's time, but there are so many things we could and should be doing, other than spending literally hundreds of millions of dollars on a jail expansion we don't need. So if you look at that list of 20 things, there's going to be a vote to march. So that's it. Thank you for your patience. I got to run to the town button.
Joel, not to cut you off, but could you expand a little bit on the hoverboard issue? I'm not quite sure I follow what the issue is.
A couple, last week, I got Francina Amparo and Kerry Reiser, there are two other county legislators, to sign a letter to the county executive on it. Basically, in 10 different states, these things are exploding, they're catching on fire. I confess, for whatever reason, I always watch WPIX lose every night at 10 o'clock. It's like every other night, there's something about a hoverboard catching on fire. And it just, it boggles my mind that so many other counties around here, they have an Office of Consumer Affairs, we don't. Whether it comes to the smart meters, which are dangerous in coastal, whether it comes to hoverboards, whether it comes to scams, you see the front page of the Poughkeepsie Journal talking about the Ulster County Consumer Affairs Department is releasing a report, but we don't have that in Dutchess County.
What's a smart meter?
A smart meter is, Central Hudson says, "Well, we don't have smart meters. We have ERTs." ERT is an encoding-receiving transmitter. If it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's a duck. If it's receiving and transmitting, it basically, a lot of privacy advocates are concerned that these smart meters, and as of two years ago, about 50% of the homes in the Hudson Valley have it, where they can tell exactly kind of what's going on inside your house. And they've been ballyhooed as, you know, energy efficient and all that, but they're not analog, they're digital. Central Hudson doesn't play games with anybody who points out the EMF radiation facets. They cut off the, they cut this homeowner in Woodstock, that their power cut off completely. Just go to stopsmartmeters.org or stopsmartmeterswoodstockny.com.
So it's an electric meter?
It's an electric meter. It's different from what we've had for decades. It's not analog. And there's been a lot of misinformation put out there. You can go to takebackyourpower.net. It's funny, because this is not a right-left Republican-Democrat issue. There's a lot of good people in the Tea Party, all across the country, Naperville, Indiana, whatever, were like, "No, we're not doing this. And we're not even going to allow the utility to come on our property, come in our house to deal with this so-called smart meter." But the EMF radiation is off the roof. If you go to bioinitiative.org, takebackyourpower.net, stopsmartmeters.org, or stopsmartmeterswoodstockny.com.
Joel, on the sidewalks, I agree that's probably a worthwhile project to look at. And we had the study here, the Rhinebeck Ward Walking, and the priorities identified were connecting the schools to the village center, as well as the village center up to the park. And that's something that we've applied for in the past, so if there's any...
Applied for county, state, federal?
We applied, what was that one? The...
It was TSP, TAP.
Safe Route to Schools. We applied for that one, and then the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is federally funded, but I think awarded through the state a couple of years ago. That was about a half million dollar project. Obviously, we didn't...
Because schools has to be, that has to be the priority.
Yeah, so schools...
Still a bit unreasonable to bond out?
Well, we have to cross the town line there too, to, you know, we could get a little ways out of the village, but it'd have to be a shared project.
Not that everybody on the county level, or state level, or federal level listens to me, but I'm going to, I'll try to get a hold of your application, and maybe I can be an effective thorn in the side. If you guys are going to re-submit, or if you already just...
I think it was about two years ago now?
Yeah, two years ago.
So as soon as the...
With Victor?
Yeah, Victor Cornelius. So as soon as the TAP program opens up again, or the, you know, the Safe Route to Schools is part of TAP, so we would apply again for probably the same project.
Yeah, obviously, that has to be the primary.
It could go together, though.
It wasn't my idea.
It's a good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to our treasurer's report. Karen?
Good evening. My treasurer's report is for the period ending December 31st. The general fund ended the month with $912,520. The water fund ended the month with $541,735. The sewer fund ended the month with $733,478. The vouchers presented for payment, the total in the general fund, including prepaid's, is $95,852.01. The water fund, $44,191.01. The sewer fund total is $23,949.86. And the capital projects total is $26,280.54. The amount transferred for escrow projects, $4,515.12. Along with the capital projects bills to be paid, I'm requesting a transfer of funds from the sewer transfer to the capital in the amount of $8,700 for the Astor Home, for the final payment of the Astor Home Pump Station, and $20,272 for the Headworks Project. The monthly operating statement, revenue and expense statement, is attached to your treasurer's report. And the water and sewer adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Sewer Department liaisons, and are attached also with the work order log for the activity for the month of December. And I ask the board for a resolution to authorize those adjustments.
I make a motion that we improve the water and sewer transfers to the general fund, and also a motion to accept your adjustments as noted.
Second. Any discussion on that? We're going to do, let's do the adjustments first. All's in favor?
Aye.
And then the transfer of funds. Any discussion on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we want to set the next budget workshop.
Do you want to authorize the payment of vouchers?
Yes, we do. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the payment of the vouchers that's submitted by treasurer. Second. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
And they're all ready to go, right? The budget workshop, we're looking at two weeks from today, it'll be November 23rd, in January, the 26th, I believe? Does that work?
26.
26. Do you want to go with 7, or do you want to make it earlier? Anybody?
I'm buying 7.
7 is a, 7 by 26.
I'm excited.
All right, Karen.
Last question, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, sorry. Just want to wait till they sit down. Do you want to give us an update on the payroll?
Oh, yes. The first payroll is in the process right now, this week, and Pat has already done the portion part of the timekeeping and inputting the time, and that's gone very smooth. Tomorrow, we get instructional with M&amp;T Bank for the direct deposit, and cut our first checks on Friday.
So first payroll starting January 1st is about to blow out.
I have a question for Karen. What did, you said it's $540,000 in the operating fund, how much is in the capital fund?
I have it here, I just don't read it.
Speaking of water, water department?
Good evening. This is a wrap-up report for December of last year, 2015. For the month of December, the water treatment plant processes $11,968,000 gallons. That's just up shy a little bit from last month, it was $11,541,000 gallons. Also, I'd like to cover something that I mentioned. Last month, we had an inspection by the Department of Health, and we got their report back from them. The recommendations, they had one recommendation, and that was up at the Hiley Field, where we have our reservoir, we have an open older water pit up there that they recommend that we close. So that's something we need to look into and determine and follow up with that. Overall, the report said there, overall, the system is operating in a very professional manner, so there was no violations or issues associated with the inspection by the Department of Health. For the distribution system now, December was a little bit busy. We repaired a water main break in East Market and Oak Street, which I think many of you saw up here, and also at Old Post Road and 42 Valley Way Road. So there was three little breaks in the water mains that were repaired during that month. We had to also replace a fire hydrant at Cornell down in Reinkliff on Mal Street and Twigsbury. Over that month, 157 new meters were installed. As you know, we're going through a continual process of updating the meters that are in everybody's homes to make them radios, so we can read them by radio versus going into the house and getting a water meeting, which will speed up that process. For the year, there was 419 work orders ever responded to in 2015 for the water department, and there was 314 requests from DigSafe to go out and work. So it's a busy, you know, we're constantly doing something, we're all constantly working on, working with the village and improving it. I also discussed last month the lagoon. The lagoon, I've been, actually, I've been discussing this for several months now. We had a contract with Spectre Serve, they had, were awarded a bid to clean the lagoon of the sludge. We were having issues, actually, they were having issues with the process of doing that, which I've discussed over a period of time. They have now voluntarily removed themselves from that bid. So we are working with Crawford Associates to go out and get a new bid, and work on a new package for what we need to do with the lagoon. On the water improvement project, this Karen mentioned this last month, that we had a kickoff meeting on what we need to do for the distribution system to improve the water supply in the village of Rhinebeck. One of the main, one of the main things brought out in that was, we need to replace the main that goes up Route 9, right, from basically, you know, down by the Legion all the way up to the fairgrounds. So that was part of the process. What they've done, is they've gone through and done all the analysis work now. SandTech has, they've basically completed all the analysis with covers, the vertical survey, the hydraulic analysis, and the preliminary mapping of that whole area. And what we asked them for was to include into that map, into that phase, also to include the main lines in, not only on Route 9, but on Livingston Street, Chestnut Street, and Platte Street. So the next phase is to do the design/survey of that, of that, so that we would be ready at some point to start the process. What we need to do for that survey, for that, that next phase of that project is $99,500, right? We have outlined a phase approach with SandTech to do this. And so what we can do is, we can authorize $56,200 now to start it, and defer $43,300 to a later date for that process. So as a, I'd like to make a motion to the board that we authorize the improvement to start the planning phase, and authorize $56,200 to do that work with the phase approach.
Second. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
That completes my report for the water department.
So just to follow up on that, we did have a workshop with SandTech, and we were all a little prepared for that expense. I did notice on here that three of the water operators are scheduled to go for their distribution operator's certification, so that's, that's a nice step in the right direction. Waste water?
Good evening. Waste water, from a functional standpoint, everything is operating quite nicely. For December 2015, we treated 3.96 million gallons of waste water. The Headworks Project is underway, and it's currently moving along nicely. There was an odor complaint that was dealt with, and I don't think that there are any subsequent to the complaint being launched. So as far as the waste water report, that's all I have.
Do we know if the water department was able to reroute that water line? I know they were going to go yesterday.
I'm not aware of that.
Oh, there was, I guess there was a slight delay in the, there was a water line that had to be relocated, and instead of doing a change order for about, I think it was $4,000 to the contractor, we were going to do it in-house with the water department. So they were out there last week, but they're waiting for this week to actually complete the work. So there was a broken valve, so they had to go back and do so.
I can follow up and let you know.
All right, department.
Good evening. First, I'd like to welcome the new officers into the fire department for the upcoming term. Kyle Amy as chief, Darren Farb as assistant chief, Brian Knapp as assistant chief, and Chrissy Amy as EMS captain. The new president of Rhinebeck Fire Department, Inc., is Mark Brown, and Marissa Monahan is the vice president. So I'd like to welcome all those folks, some of them are here tonight. We got a new and nice improved report, lots of details and lots of information, and I'll go through the highlights of it all. There was 19 fire calls for the month of December 2015. There were 11 calls in the village, seven in the town, and one mutual aid call. For the month of December, there was also 64 EMS calls, 46 in the village, 16 in the town, and we provided mutual aid twice. There were also six motor vehicle accidents, five in the village, one in the town, bringing the total to 70 calls for the EMS. For 2014-2015, year-to-date, there were 230 fire calls, 95 in the town and 97 in the village, and we provided mutual aid, again, 38 times. The EMS call statistics for 2014-15 were 627 EMS calls, that's a considerable amount of calls, 305 in the village, 239 in the town, and 22 mutual aid calls, 61 motor vehicle accidents, 44 in the town, 17 in the village. The department also wants a report that in addition to the officers, five engineers have been appointed to assist with maintenance and inventory apparatus. The new officers just wanted to let everyone know that the month of January is being dedicated to the reorganization of the department, full inventory of all supplies and equipment, and restructuring of operations is taking place. Also, on Saturday, January 9th, the fire department held their annual installation dinner, and the following people were recognized for their outstanding service. Rookie of the Year was Jose Andrade, firefighter of the year, Chris Van Buskirk, EMS provider of the year in the audience tonight, Jeff Cotter, dedication and leadership, Kyle Amy, 30 years, outstanding service award, Sheldon Teeter and John McGuire. Outstanding Service Award, Sheldon Teeter and John McGuire. And then Life Saving Award, Brian Conley and Sheldon Teeter. Uh, and these commissioners gave an award to, uh, Bill Vickery. Uh, Bill Vickery for his outstanding service and it's something to the tune of, in the, over the past 10 years, responding to 5,000 calls. A lot of other numbers that are part of that, but that was the number that, that stood out for me. 14 other people really are, were recognized for their dedication, um, for responding to between 100 and 299 calls. And I'd like to name them all as, uh, Jose Andrade, Kevin Asher, Elijah Bender, Tim Day, Chrissy Amy, Darren Forbes, Sonny Fryman, Charlie Fraley, John Apparato, Bryant Knapp, Todd Leary, Marissa Monahan, and Chris Van Buskirk. Uh, two people, Henry Campbell and John McGuire, for making between 300 and 399 calls. And four people, uh, Jeff Cotter, Sheldon Teeter, Tony Bowe, and Bill Vickery for making over 400 calls. Fire department also awarded, uh, a past president's plaque to Bill Strokeup and a past chief's plaque to Kevin Asher. Also, something of note, just to show the dedication of our department. During the Christmas holiday, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, the fire department handled 13 calls, uh, which, you know, led, leads to people leaving their families, you know, to provide the service that we all appreciate. And that is that for the report. Also, as a part of, uh, tonight's meeting, we have the benefit of adding three more firefighters to the fire department. And, uh, the department, um, has the following, the following individuals have successfully, the background checks have been completed and their interview processes have all been approved. All of these nominees were voted favorably by the membership of the fire department. And I would like to make a motion to accept Scott Odkin, Walter Cotter, who was in the audience tonight, and Brendan Coffey. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to accept these three candidates into the Ryback Fire Department.
Second, discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Welcome Walter.
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for all that you guys do. Thanks. Do you have anything? You want, want this, then we're good?
No, just set us on EPCR's?
We have it. Rich dropped it off. You and I have something to go over, but it's, all the information is here.
Okay.
Um, we just, you and I have to meet and just, there's some things that we need to add some people's names to, like a representative that's gonna represent the fire department or the EMT department with regard to this.
Okay.
I don't know if it's you, Marissa, or, there's some, but we're good to go. Once you and I go through it, then it's good.
Okay.
So we can do that tomorrow.
Okay, awesome.
It looks like the grand total for the year ending October 31st of 15 was 857 calls. So that's 54 more than the previous year. Where are we at in terms of, is that the most, was there one?
No, December was out of control. We are...
No, I mean for the year.
Oh, for the year, yeah, that's the most ever.
Okay, I thought there was one that was higher, but, I know, okay, so.
It's only going up.
Trend continues upward, um, probably set another record next year.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you guys.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you guys.
In juries. Street department. I don't have a formal, street department report, John didn't handle it? Okay, so we have this, um, form here from the New York State Department of Transportation asking for a shared services agreement. Everybody has this, right?
Yeah.
Basically, this is for state to share with the, with the village, I believe this is correct. Share resources during an event that does not warrant or any absence of a governor's emergency declaration. Should we review this first? Do you review it?
Okay.
And your recommendation is that we enter into the agreement?
Okay. So I make a motion that we enter into this agreement with New York State DOT.
Discussion?
What's the, um, cost obligation for the village?
The agreement doesn't cost us anything. It's, um, I believe there is the only...
You gotta ensure maybe that you're damage equal and obviously you gotta repair it. Not to exceed...
Not to exceed $10,000. And then obviously there's damage to equipment. That becomes the liability of the, the borrowing. Alright. All's in favor?
Aye.
We have a couple other things that I, I guess, do we want to do the vehicle traffic under police? Be on some of the streets?
It's up to you, your call.
Okay, Rich, doesn't matter to you?
Just set public hearing.
Alright, so we wanna, um, we have revised the language for the restricted parking on Center Street in front of Village Hall and the police station for our last, uh, discussion and public hearing. So, um, we need to have public hearing too.
You gotta set a public hearing on that. You also indicated that you wanted to have a discussion on, because we can do it all under one, since it's all VNT?
One public hearing on VNT, right? Okay, so we have that. We have the extension on the two-hour parking, we've resolved. Apparently the extension is not necessarily because the two-hour parking already goes up to Oak Street down West Market, which was the request that we had. And the other piece, um, is the park speed limit. Initially, we had thought, uh, we may not be able to adjust the speed limit there, but have since learned otherwise. So, um, my recommendation is to set the speed limit in the park, Thompson Mazarella Park, at 10 miles per hour. Uh, there'd been a request from the park committee, uh, because they've had complaints of speeding and it's not posted, so our place aren't able to enforce the speed limit. So, uh, if they were posted, then the village place or any other law enforcement jurisdiction could, uh, could enforce that law. So I guess the question is, the limit, my opinion was 10, but...
Well, what is it by this chancellor school, 15?
15. That seems slow enough.
I think the state, I thought the state limits were 15 to 25.
That's for, that's for roads. There's a separate section dealing with the property owned by the municipality such as parks under 1670 of the vehicle and traffic law.
So that we can set it at anything?
Set it lower than the 25 mile an hour limit that's imposed.
I agree with Howie. 15 seems to be the appropriate number for around schools and safety. If it's approved for around the school area where there's kids and children running, I would think the same thinking should apply to the road here.
I would say, I use, I use the park a lot. And I, the, the site distances aren't the same around the school. It's because the road turns quite a bit, you don't have that big long distance. So I think 10 actually is more appropriate because you can't see.
There's essentially no shoulder there either now, there's curbs. And there is, uh, at the school, most of the traffic of the children is up by the, the building and the park when you have to come right from out of the pool or the library directly into the, to the roadway, essentially to get to the cars, they gotta cross the, the main corridor.
So this is the whole, the road rate from also Reinkliff Road or, you know, all the way down to new, the new road, where it joins in with the old section and then the old section down to the ballpark.
They removed all the speed bumps and they're not putting in new ones. That's kind of the reason behind this.
I guess in the past, going way back to solution was speed bumps, I think, because they ran into the problem of not being able to set the speed limit legally. Now it seems that we have that, uh, that ability. And the park committee does not want speed bumps because of the aesthetic impact, so.
I mean, they're both slow, I don't know.
Yeah.
10, my only comment is 10 is really hard, it's hard to maintain.
I don't think you'd get a ticket for doing 11, 15, you know? It's, I think it's the idea, just to keep it slow and keep it safe. Whatever, whatever the number is.
Sure. Got two 10s and two 15s, you're gonna split.
He's gonna say 10.
Go for 5, Sean.
No, I mean, uh, obviously, safety's the primary concern, so, um, and in the absence of the speed bumps, it would seem at first, uh, that 10 would be reasonable, but I also tend to agree with the fact, 10 is, you're like riding your brakes.
I mean, you do have the library entrance within the first couple hundred feet. You have the intersection right there.
Did we get a suggestion from the parks committee regarding the speed limit? I don't believe we did.
I'm on the park committee.
So we...
Can I say something else about the intersection there with the, with the library? Currently, there's a stop sign there. And some people from the library are concerned that when there's bad weather, if people stop, because it's an incline. If they do stop there, they're not gonna be able to get up onto the main road. So there's some talk of putting a yield sign there. So stop, that's bad. So a stop sign is for leaving the library? Leaving the library, going onto this main road we're talking, I think it's, it's called Trayber Lane, right?
Right.
Yeah. So that's another...
So we can set the public hearing and take input from the park committee and...
You can set the public hearing, you put it on the 10 mile an hour limit. Now if you decide to lessen it to the 15, that's a less restrictive word that you could pass it then without having to redo a public hearing.
Yeah, sounds like, I'm okay with that, so it's a...
Sounds like a solution right there.
We can move things forward, but we still have an opportunity to get input from other concerned stakeholders.
Okay. So good. Uh, so I make a motion to set the public hearing for those two, uh, vehicle and traffic laws. For...
10 miles.
Yeah, for 10 miles an hour, but for, uh, what's the date of the?
February 9th.
For February 9th at 7:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What, what day's 7th, February 9th?
That's our going, yeah.
Our normal, so it's gonna be our normal meeting.
Yes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We also have, um, the, a new version of the yard waste pickup. Did anybody, did you guys see that?
Yeah. I got a chance to read it today.
Okay. So I'd like to set the public hearing for the same time. So I mean, you have it now, we went through the revisions that, that we've had and combined what we had come up with originally and what Rich had provided. So I'd like to make a motion to set the public hearing for, uh, for that law as well.
February 9th?
February 9th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Hey Howie.
Yes?
Your highway department, the report is on, the building is zoning.
Oh, it is?
It's in there. Okay, let me get to that.
That's because John was nice enough to put them in after hours.
Sorry.
Landing and zoning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, he'll have a highway report. Highway department report. Scott, is it in the middle here or?
Oh, here, you want mine? Yeah, it's right behind her.
I'll give her that one. Okay, so. Okay, the job, some of the jobs that the highway department has been doing is cold patching. Uh, they clean the parks of the mulch and the leaves, um, on Rockefeller Lane. We did have one little small storm where they plowed and salted. Uh, equipment and repair was done on the, on the backhoe. Truck repairs were done electrically. We do have a in-house mechanic, Scott Minn, does a very, very fine job. Uh, they've been picking up the Christmas trees and those are being put into the mulch pile, I mean, into the, the, uh, yeah, the mulch pile. The brush pile, which will be made into mulch. Uh, they did some work at the water treatment plant. Some backhoe work. Uh, sign replacement was done on Garden Street. Stump grinding is ongoing. As long as there's no snow out there, they'll be able to find the stumps from the trees that were cut down over this last year. And they've done some shared services with the town doing mill work on the roads. With, and that means we have, um, a, uh, skid steer which has a miller on it. So the town is borrowing that from us. And we've been helping them with a few jobs on that. Uh, John has a request for the status of the brush and leaf pickup, which we just talked about.
He reviewed the version as well.
Okay. And he's looking for a final date for leaf and brush pickups, which is on this cleanup of yard waste.
Maybe he's talking about this here. Tell him when it's done.
Yeah, it's done now.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Did we mention the Durango last time?
I don't think so.
Was that not done then? So the old police car, the, uh, the Dodge Durango that was retired from the police department that has since been recycled to a multi-use, um, village vehicle and the, the task was completed in-house. Uh, the bodywork was completed down at the highway garage, the painting, I think for a total of 500 and some dollars, so. If you see it out back, it looks pretty good for $500. Maybe another 100 in stickers, I'm not sure, but.
It's like an undercover police car.
It does, so watch out. Landing and zoning?
From zoning perspective, uh, John Fenton reports that there were six fire inspections for zoning violations were cited and four were corrected. Total, uh, building permit, permit revenue for 2015 was $65,414.75 and a total of 101 building permits were issued.
Where are we at with the zoning commission? Do we have?
The zoning commission is finalizing its work. Uh, we're going through the, tomorrow, we're meeting again tomorrow night. Finalizing the definitions. Uh, we've been through the, the whole code, um, and made changes. We went back through, make sure that they were, um, they didn't affect other pieces of the code. Uh, we're refining the definitions, we're finding that there weren't maybe enough definitions in the code, for some of the, the references that we make. But I suspect that we will have a draft within the month.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the police department. There were 26 incidents, uh, in the town in December, 124 in the village. 15 tickets in the town, 113 in the village. A total of three arrests and 10 accidents. A short note from Central Claus. There were 27 parking, uh, tickets issued and there were 13 calls for service during the event. No arrests, overall, it was a smooth, a smooth process. So I think that brings us to the tree commission.
Yes. Again, I don't have a formal report because our secretary of the tree commission was in London during our tree meeting, but we do have a few members of the tree commission here. They wanted to come up and talk about some potential tree removals by Central Hudson. Meg Crawford.
What's, what's this one?
So I don't know whether you, did you, Nick, were able to give them copies of their records?
Yeah. So, yeah, so, do you want to give the background?
Okay, so, yeah. Uh, every four years, Central Hudson comes around. I guess technically a federal law, they have to come around and clear the trees. The, the main wire, um, has to be cleared. If it goes through a tree, it has to be cleared 10 feet on each side and 14 feet from the bottom.
15.
15 feet from the bottom.
Bottom wire, electric wire down to the tree.
That's, um, a homeland security issue that was instituted after, uh, 2003 when the last major blackout occurred on the east coast. So Central Hudson, um, came to our tree commission meeting last week and has given us the option of, of cutting down a lot of these trees where these wires go through. Um, they would, they would, um, shoulder 80% of the cost. They came up with 127 trees. And most of these trees have already been cut in the past and, uh, the thing happened, when, when a tree gets cut like this, it affects the health of the tree. So some of the trees are dying because of these, these actions, which have to be taken by Central Hudson. So they came up with a plan, they had, we have a list of 127 trees and, which potentially could be cut down by Central Hudson if we decide to do it.
Let me just add to the, uh, to the four-year plans of Central Hudson has come in the past and will continue to come every four years. And when they cut this corridor for the, for the wire, so they are coming through the village, uh, end of this month regardless. So it's either we, um, you know, partner with them to take down, fully take down the trees, or they are going to cut the corridor as they would. They don't have to ask us for permission for that, they have, um, the right and the responsibility to do it to maintain the power grid. So, uh, previously, the, the box around the wire, I think was a four-foot box on each side, and then it was increased to the much larger standards in, in two thousand and three. So we've all seen what it looks like when they cut their path, uh, around the wires, but, you know, it, it's getting bigger. The trees have been, have been cut more.
So, but just to be clear, so I, they have the right to clear up to ten feet. They said that they've been considerate of us and our community and our trees, and they've only been doing it to four or five. That's, that's what we heard at the last meeting, that they haven't been doing ten.
I don't think it was the right, I think they're required to.
Well, they, yeah, they, they were taking.
General, generally, they're required to cut ten by fifteen, but they, they.
Right.
So.
Kind of look the other way.
Is this proposal being made by Central Hudson to come into compliance with the directive from the federal government? No, they, they have their, they're going to come through and cut their, their box around the wires regardless. But it's easier for them, I mean, it's clear, it's a cost savings for them if they take the tree out.
They have, to take down the trees for sixty dollars.
Right.
A penalty to take them down.
What was that cost?
Six zero. Charge a bill of sixty dollars.
Sixty, sixty dollars.
To take down the trees.
And there's no charge for cutting the box out?
No, no.
No, that, that happens whether we want it to or not, it's, it's an option for us to, to have the trees removed.
So, so let's, let's go through the whole scenario.
They're cutting the box to, I'm kind of confused now in terms of, are they cutting it to the ten foot, or are they cutting, are they going to leave it at the four foot?
They're going to cut to the ten foot.
They're going to cut to the ten foot?
At fifteen. They've been able to cut to the ten foot since two thousand and three, they have been doing it.
But they have, but they have chose not to, but now they're going to go ahead and cut to the ten foot.
They don't go back.
Oh, that's what I'm trying to.
They have the right to.
It's in their discretion.
We're not going to tell them yes or no.
It's in their discretion when they get up there and when it's happening, they subcontract it out to, to multiple vendors, so it's.
Well, I'm just trying to set our expectations of what we're going to see if they.
Well, there.
There's also ten feet from green and doctor, so it's.
That's why I'm assuming the box.
It's a pretty wide box.
Yes, it is. But that being said, so, so that this meeting, so we, I, the tree committee, why you want, this is your deal, Howie, if you want to finish up, I don't, I don't steal your thunder.
Oh, whatever you want.
So, no, so what I'm saying, so I sat in over at the tree commission meeting, I listened to the, to everything, and, and so then, we, we've heard that Central Hudson identified a hundred and twenty-seven trees that potentially could be taken down, and they located them between poles, right? And so then Meg and Nick went out.
And looked at every single one?
Looked at every single tree and marked every tree, because a hundred and twenty-seven to me sounded very excessive. And so I've seen these trees cleared, whether it be four foot or ten foot, for years and years and years, and of course, it's shocking when it's first done. But we, it seems to grow in, and it seems that we still have our canopies in our streets and everything else. So, but a hundred and twenty-seven sounded excessive, so Heath had asked them to go out and mark the trees, and they went out and marked the trees. And again, it's pretty excessive now. I think Heath also asked to go through that list and for you to agree or not agree with the one twenty-seven. And so I think that's what Meg is here to report.
Um, before I go through it, we did go, um, through all the trees, and, uh, Nick and I agreed that except for a couple, we recommend that they be taken down. And this is the main reason why we recommend it. It's, uh, there are, I would say, half of those trees, and this, this is the part that I think shocked Scott in particular, are located on our state roads, East Market and, uh, north of the light on Route nine. Not the locusts, but the Norway maples that are further up toward the hospital. And those Norway maples, um, should be trees that are in parks or in lawns because they have the capacity to grow to a hundred feet tall. And about seventy feet wide if they were to mature in a place where they should be. And when they were planted, they were planted between the sidewalk and the street, restricting, um, not only their canopy because they're under these wires. But also, and they have to be cut there for every four years, but also because their root zone has to go under these sidewalks. Um, and so they're restricted, and what happens is that they buck the sidewalks, they're shallow wood trees. And most of the sidewalk issues that we've seen all through town are a result of this Norway maple. Which, when we did the inventory as the tree commission about eight years ago, the Norway maple made up, made up more than fifty percent of our tree stock in the village. So as a tree commission, we haven't planted, we won't plant Norway maples. And, um, we won't, we have reduced the amount of maples in general that we want to plant because it's a biodiversity problem that we have in this village. The ashes are, we're losing all of our ashes now. The Asian longhorn beetle threatens maples. If it gets up here, we lose that whole stock of trees. So, um, in our opinion, those trees, particularly on nine and East Market, um, are, they pose a hazard to the, to the village the longer we keep them. And many of them, their roots have been cut recently because they bucked the sidewalk, and I think the village paid to repair the sidewalks on Route nine. And in that process, they recently cut the roots on those trees on the sidewalk side of Route nine, which means that those trees are more in danger of falling if there's a storm because there's no structural support on the sidewalk side of that tree. So, um, there are also cracks in some of these trees. There is dead and dying wood in some of these trees because they've been cut both of the root and the canopy repeatedly. And in many instances, there are beautiful trees on the property owner's side of the sidewalk, which if these Norway maples are removed, will fill in more and you won't even miss the tree. So for all those reasons and for the fact that we could get these trees taken down for sixty dollars as opposed to, if we're lucky, five hundred or more dollars a tree by a private contractor. If we did it, we would recommend taking advantage of this, you know, offer by Central Hudson to take them down. And then replace them with a biodiverse group of trees that will add flowers and, uh, colorful leaves and winter interest to that corridor, which the tree commission could do.
Magdell appeared to have been planted around the same time, do we know the approximate age of the trees that are?
I don't know when they were planted, just looking at them, I'm guessing there, it was about forty years ago. Maybe there are people that lived in this town that would be able to. Longer than me.
Or Steve.
I don't remember exactly whenever it was.
Unfortunately, I think the wires have gotten lower because we've added, uh, cable wires often on the same side, not always on the same side. So that lowers, not that we have to cut for those wires, but they're still getting into those wires, but, um, so, and also the box wasn't as big that was cut way back then. So, but whoever planted them, they shouldn't have been planted there, it was a species that was improperly planted.
So Meg, is that also, I'm assuming not, the stump removal?
Stump removal is not included.
So is that an issue that we need to also address?
Well, um, it would be nice eventually to get all those stumps out. In our replanting plan, what we would like to do is to plant wherever possible on the lawn side of the sidewalk and not in that median strip anyway. Because if we can plant on the lawn side, we can plant a bigger tree because we don't have to worry about the wires again. There are instances on East Market where you don't have any space at all behind the sidewalk, the houses come right up to the sidewalk. And in those instances, we would replace with ornamental trees that are underwired trees, crab apples, cherries, tree lilacs. Um, and in those instances, we might need the stumps, we moved more quickly just to make space for another tree. But, um, not in, on, uh, Route nine. There are big lawns behind the sidewalk in many cases where we could put trees.
Stump removal is a bigger deal than you'd think because the utilities that are buried below are probably intertwined with the roots. So for the most part, most of the stumps will be ground and probably very few.
Yeah, they're, they're not going to be removed.
Yeah.
Ground, grinding is.
I kind of assumed they'd be.
I was going to say, it's not.
No, it's not going to be removal, it's going to be grinding.
So we would grind this.
Yeah, the highway department.
The highway department can do that?
Yeah.
So. Did Central Hudson give us a timeframe by when we had to respond to?
They need to know immediately.
They're coming through at the end of this month, and they're either going to do the, the box, or they're going to do, uh, what we authorize them to do in terms of takedowns. So it's off the table, their, their proposition of, uh, a proposal of sixty dollars a tree is off the table.
After this.
Right.
That's correct.
They're coming, they're due to come through.
It's, it's too drastic of a, it, I, 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 just maybe this is just me stubborn and, and, I don't know, but it's, I find it hard to believe that a hundred and twenty-seven trees are in the same exact condition. Number one. Number two is, is that unless we have a real good plan to replace eighty of them or how many, I, I don't think we should do it. And, and two is, is I think a, a good plan would be to identify the twenty-five or thirty-three percent of the worst ones in that group and maybe take advantage of that. Um, because a hundred and twenty-seven trees at one time, I, I, I find it hard to believe that there's that many that are in that bad a condition.
Well, I hate to tell you, but there are a whole lot more that are that bad, but they're just not under the wires and we can't take the advantage of Central Hudson. I mean, I, I'm a tree commission person, I just want to say this, it's not easy for me to want to take down trees. I wouldn't be doing this if I didn't think it was for the benefit of the future of, of the beautification of Ryman, I really wouldn't. And, um, you know, we have to, all the time, people are coming in with applications for pruning and takedowns because our tree stock is old in this town. And we're losing trees all the time, and.
And so Meg, I, I tend to want to agree with Scott that this is like a shock to the system to do this, but listening to what you have to say, it sounds very logical and to address this problem sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean, the problem with doing it piecemeal is partly that we don't know that this offer is going to come from Central Hudson, again, and if it does, it won't come for four years, the offer. Second of all, if we do the Route nine and East Market Streets piecemeal, we can't replace those trees on East Market or, uh, Route nine without getting state approval to do it because they're, they're, uh, state roads. So we did a piecemeal, every time we wanted to replace trees, we would have to go to the state to do it. We do it now, we can all do it in one.
Oh, my question to you and the, and the tree committee is, how come these were not identified as being critical or crucial, dangerous? And now all of a sudden, since Central Hudson can take them down for sixty dollars, that they are?
Well, if you picked all, you know, the trees that are the most dangerous in the town, they're not all the most dangerous in the town. There are others that are more dangerous, and we have a very limited budget for taking down trees in this town, very limited. So we've been, you know, haven't picked out a lot of trees. You know, I'm just saying that when these get cut, when they get cut again, what you're going to have left and what you're going to miss after the cutting, if we go with a removal instead of cutting, is what you're going to miss is the trunk. You're not going to miss the canopy, you're going to miss the trunk. Because that's most of what's going to be left, honestly. And I can understand why you might miss that trunk initially, it does make a line down Route nine, you know, but, um, that's what you're going to miss.
Colin, do you have a question?
Yeah, do you want?
I don't know if you remember, but, uh.
Do you want to come up for a fact?
Yes, no, when, uh, we had the storms and so on, we had blockage on Route nine. We found that, uh, Howie probably remembers that, that the roots of these trees got right into the drainage system. And, uh, that that is another issue that you may want to consider. Particularly, particularly the, uh, the Norway maples, they went way down and then found themselves in cracks and blocked up the, the drainage system.
We have a video, we, we videoed the, um, the, uh, stormwater pipes and these maple trees. The stormwater pipes are ceramic pipes and there's concrete in between them, the, uh, where they, where they're put together a hundred years ago, whatever. And the roots from these trees go right through the concrete seams and as things get washed into the storm drains, it gets clogged up. The, the roots are actually holding back a lot of debris. So what we did was we hired a, a water auger to chop up the roots inside the pipes. So that is one of the problems that are associated with these trees. Now, I go back and forth on this whole issue because it's just, we just found out about this last Tuesday, and, and they're pressing us to get an answer like right now, which I think we can push them a little bit farther. He said, maybe February, late February, to give him an answer, didn't he?
I think he wanted to do it within the window of time that they're here trimming trees. So they're going to do the town first, they gave us that leeway to, to do all the town part first. But once they're finished with the town part, you know, I don't think they're going to wait a month, you know, and then come back.
I'd rather not speculate and make an easy decision, so if we want to call him and reach out and find out exactly when, so we can properly plan, have a public information session or do something like that. But a hundred and twenty-seven is too drastic to just, he said.
How do we do that within the, if the deadline is?
Well, I don't think it is the month, I think, because he said he, we could have a public information, uh, set, uh, and he said it was very smart.
And that's more or less after, uh, we have made the decision where we want to go in terms of cutting down. We, if, if this board is going to, um, approve, you know, sixty dollars a tree for a hundred trees, then that's what we're going to take to the, uh, public information session. If we decide it's going to be sixty trees, but we should identify, you know, more, more visibly than now, identify exactly which ones are, are going to come down. But if you, I don't know, have you had, have you seen the markings yet?
No.
Okay.
Probably. But they're not all marked either, are they?
Yes, they're all marked.
They all are, South Street, because I couldn't find.
Yeah.
So.
Every single one is marked.
We'll take a look, on Sunday they were marked?
Yeah.
Were they marked on Sunday?
No, Sunday's where they're marked.
No, but I mean, I was trying to find them on Sunday.
They're marked on that.
Okay, that's, that's my point.
Well, nine and East Market Street were all, were marked.
East Market and.
On Friday.
Yeah, Route nine and East Market were marked, I, I found those, but I couldn't find all the other ones, because they're, they're going by poll numbers on this list, Central Hudson poll numbers, it's not by the address.
Didn't you put the address down?
Well, I've, I've written down most of the addresses yet, but.
Just to be clear, the marking is a two-inch.
It's a white dot.
Two-inch diameter white dot, so.
On the street side.
Yeah.
On the street side.
Yeah.
No, more like white something.
You can see them when you're driving, but I mean.
But I mean, it's basically.
Be careful.
If you know what street to look at, it's only so many on each street.
So I can give you a list.
The biggest I saw would be nine.
Right.
Really, was where you noticed it the most, and that's twenty-five of a hundred and twenty-seven.
So when is, when do you guys meet again?
Well, we're meeting the nineteenth.
Okay.
For a special meeting.
A week from today.
Because we wanted to make a decision about, um, replanting for next year.
Okay.
And we can't really make that decision without knowing what you're wanting to do.
Okay, so we need to give, um, Gary and Sean in particular, all of us a chance to go see the, the trees again, but we need to make a, a decision one way or the other. Maybe we can have a, a joint meeting on, uh, next Tuesday.
My recommendation to you would be, if you're only going to do partial, would be to either do all the, the state trees, meaning the ones on nine and East Market together, or all the others. But to keep those state trees together, as, you know, to do together, so that when we go to replant, we can appeal to the state at one time rather than doing it in a physical fashion. So since it divides up about fifty-fifty, all the others and East Market and nine.
Well, the others are certainly more isolated, they're not all in a row.
Some of them are, but, but not in a row like nine.
Right, so the impact is going to be much less. So I know part of the, the discussion was maybe we could take out every third tree, fourth tree, every other tree, something. Is that something that's feasible?
It's feasible, but I'm not recommending it because if you do that. It's feasible, but I'm not recommending it because if you do that for the same reason, you know, you're going to go in terms of replacement and I know that's what you want to do, you want to replace as soon as possible. On the state roads, it's just much more difficult to do that in a piecemeal fashion. I'll hold with the point of, it's going to be difficult to choose which of those trees, honestly.
That's worse. Well, it could possibly be done in, you know, we, we take out a third now, we replant a third now, four years from now, whether we are, have to come up with sixty dollars or a thousand a tree or whatever it is, you know, that we plant. So not, not individual one-tree permits from the, from the DOT, but.
Meg, wouldn't it be better to have staggered ages too of trees? I mean, I know, I understand the idea of doing everything at once, it's, you know, but having every tree being the same exact age, that means most of them would die at the same time. Wouldn't it be nice to stagger them?
Well, we're not putting, I just want you to know that our recommendation is not to put trees back where these Norway maples are coming out.
But still putting trees back.
But there are trees behind them that are, that are a different age already. When you go look at these trees, I want you to be as aware if you can of what trees are right behind those trees. Because I think, you know, we're so focused on these trees, you're not aware of the whole setting that these trees are in. So that's why one hundred and twenty-seven sounds horrible. But if you see where a lot of these are, you'll see that behind those trees, there's some really beautiful trees, big trees, that have full canopies that are growing.
So the recommendation that you just made, is that a recommendation that's being made on behalf of the entire tree commission?
We're just, this is it. Except for one person.
The commission in my mind is set up to tackle these types of issues and I don't know each and every one of your backgrounds, you know, from a professional standpoint, but I think a certain level of deference should certainly be given to the tree commission and you guys serving your, you know, the function that you serve.
What time is your meeting on?
Seven.
Seven.
On the nineteenth.
Is it always at seven?
Yes.
Well, almost always.
At six or six-thirty?
Wait, you want to change it?
You want to change it?
Well, if, if you.
Got the people here.
If there's any chance you guys could do early, then we can do ours at seven, you guys could.
I can do earlier.
Does that make, does that make sense or?
If Walter can, I don't know.
Yeah, I can, I can come earlier. And mention also, aside from the sidewalks, that these, what's left of these trees are hanging out in, in the state roadway and trucks are getting.
That's the other.
Causing damage to vehicles because they're.
Right.
Lower than the height that should be sticking out in the roadway.
Right, and we can't, and the trouble is, is that they limb down and if we have to limb up because of trucks.
There's nothing left.
I, I think that's a valid point because I think we're faced with either the removal of trees or they're going to cut out this twenty-by-fifteen box, you know, and we're not, and what are we going to have left?
The lower limbs.
And, and so what is, what is going to be a worse shock to the system, looking at three limbs sticking up, you know, what's left of the tree or removing the tree?
A lot of the trees on the list are on there for that reason, is by the time they're done, it's going to be a stump.
Or broccoli stump, they called it.
Yes. So what, to me, that's pretty much of a shock.
But a lot.
So we will schedule a village board meeting for seven o'clock next Tuesday and we will plan to, to make a determination at that time.
And we get, the tree commission can meet at seven. Is that the plan?
Well, we need to know your decision before we make our plans. I mean, the biggest point of our meeting, I mean, we have one application we have to review, but the biggest.
The one application on this list.
All right, well, let's do it at seven then, we'll have a, a tree, a tree workshop and, you know, you guys, if you need to do your other stuff before or after, that's fine, but we'll be prepared. Our goal will be to make a determination as to what funds we are prepared to, to spend in.
Well, then we'll know where we're going with it.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it won't only be, presumably, it will not only be the removal fund that you'll have to approve, but also if we take a fair number of these, you know, they're, we're recommending that twenty, between East Market and, um, East Market and West Chestnut, which is right off of Nine and Nine, we're recommending twenty-seven new trees there.
So we have the replacement plan.
We, yeah, we figured out what trees should go there, but we need money toward that too, because we don't normally plant that many in this town, so.
Have you decided how far back of the sidewalks we could plant on Route Nine? Have you looked at the right-of-way? Because I know you, that's your expertise.
I pointed out to Maggie earlier, about a foot off.
A foot behind the sidewalk.
The two back from the sidewalk is where the, the right-of-way is. So we're going to need to talk to some homeowners and ask, but we're talking about a little bit, you know, a foot or two.
Right, because I think that's important for the board to know, you know, if we put replacement trees, how far back from the sidewalk it's going to be.
Can we get a, a visual, like on a map?
We tried to get a visual, you have no.
I can, I can do it by, when we're in it, by, by the.
Yes, you go to the Kipsey to get a map.
From the Kenan?
Yeah, do you have like a tax map or something that I can actually draw on you?
Do we have something that we can?
I have.
Oh, okay. So if we could put it on the map and show, you know, red dots, these are the ones coming out.
Those are my.
Okay. Blue dots on touch, green ones, new ones, whatever, so that we can look at it and say, okay, this is what it's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take you a long time to put the ones that aren't going to be, are you talking about the ones that are untouched that will affect the view or are you talking about the ones untouched that are in the right-of-way?
I think identify all of them, all one-twenty-seven, right? Isn't that what you want?
No, I'm not, one hundred and twenty-seven, that's one thing.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of existing, what I'm saying is.
We don't need every existing tree.
A lot of existing tree material that's not in the right-of-way that affects your vision.
In particular, I think the Route Nine and the East Market.
We're going to walk it, I mean, we're going to, yeah, in order to see that, oh yeah, I'm not going to go based on the map, but it'd be nice to be able to look at a map and say, these are.
No, we can tell you the ones that are coming out and also the ones that, the places where we propose new ones, but.
And that's why I want you to know how far back from the sidewalk we can plant the trees, so when you're walking. So if it's one or two feet though, that's not enough room, you'd have to ask the homeowner for it.
It'd be nice to be able to set it back for.
And you have a list that's, that shows, you put the addresses like in the comments here? Okay, well, can you give us that list and maybe we don't need the map, maybe we can, everybody can take their own notes on, on that for comparison? Okay, that'd be good, okay. All right.
There's one other thing I have.
Well, if you think of it.
Oh, just to make sure, if you can, to talk to Peter and find out what his deadline is because.
Yeah.
I think I.
His drop dead, his drop dead deadline.
Yeah. For, for notifying him whether we're going to be doing removals, because he said he had to hire a separate company to do removal.
One of the things too, he said that it's less shocking if there's no leaves on the trees.
Right, well, that's, I, so we do have like until.
So he was saying.
We do have until eight over the.
Was really what he didn't want to go past that, if that were.
Right.
But I don't, that's just.
I don't think they're going to wait too long for us to make a decision. If we don't give them the go-ahead and tell them we're doing it, then they're going to do, cut their box out, be down the road, go on. That's my impression. We have nothing from Parks and Rec. Special request, you have an update on the porch fest application? Thought I saw one on email. Do we know what the update is? I guess they have approved on the fairgrounds for parking at the Platinum Larry Street on Sunday Septe-, Saturday, September seventeenth. They have a contract with the Agricultural Society and then they have about ten participants, all look to be on Chestnut and Platte, all homeowners that have agreed to host a, a band on their porch. And then a flyer, a looks like proposed flyer that gives all the directions as to what, what's going to happen on that day. So what are they looking for from us?
She's just going to give you an update.
Oh.
At some point they should come back in, right?
Yeah.
As things start to gather.
And then we have this, under other business, we have the Central Hudson LED issue. Does that count for streets or does that count for house? They want us to put new LEDs up on Montgomery Street by the hospital, right?
Does it look like just one?
I think it's replacing one that was removed during hospital construction. But the pole on Montgomery Street, they put, they took the pole down and put a new one right where the.
There's an email behind this.
Yeah.
From the Central Hudson. It's a request from the hospital.
And Central Hudson will do it if we give them permission. It's right where the, where the building is, the medical arts building.
Didn't we previously vote to allow the phase-in over time of LED?
I think this is a separate, this is. No, I understand that, but. Didn't we ask the question, we wondered how long that was, or what period of time that would be? They, they were going to replace the, their high-pressure sodium as they went out with LEDs.
Right.
We just, they asked for the permission, we just asked what, how long was that going to take? Ten years, five years, three years?
I don't know that we got an answer on that.
I don't think we got an answer on that.
Who was, um, when we talked to them about this, we can.
Yeah. So does anyone have any opposition to this?
No.
I don't.
Okay. So I'll make our recommendation to approve the installation of LED on Montgomery Street as requested by North Hudson.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
We have a request from the Republican Party to hold their caucus for village election here in this room on January twenty-third at ten a.m. The, uh, the building is available, I believe Pat confirmed. So I'll make a motion to approve that request for our use of the building.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor? Have a resolution for the election, so is this a resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So the annual village election will take place on Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. The election will take place at the Town Hall, Ryback Town Hall, eighty, East Market Street, as the Town Hall is handicapped accessible. Building will take place from noon till nine p.m. Village registered voters will be voting for three candidates, two trustees with two-year terms, one trustee with one-year term. I don't have to announce the candidates because they've been determined. Absentee ballots are available at the village office right here, seventy-six East Market Street, Ryback, New York. Applications can be requested at the village office or by phone, eight-seven-six-seven-zero-one-five. Applications must be returned to the village office by March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, if the ballots have to be mailed, or by March fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, if the ballots can be personally delivered to the village office. Of note, there is no longer a village registration day, all voters for the village election must be registered with Dutchess County Board of Elections at the correct address in the village, submitted by Pat Coon, village clerk, the, uh, our election administrator, did that you call? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? And we need to appoint the election inspectors. For the Republicans, we have Jennifer Mund as a machine inspector, Linda Janow as an intake inspector alternate, Mary Ciprilli as an intake inspector alternate, and Susan Waters as an intake inspector. For the Democrats, we have David Gelb as an intake inspector, Amy O'Callas as an intake inspector, and Linda McAtier as a machine inspector alternate. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint the above-mentioned election inspectors.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
And they are all village residents by the. I think we still have an open question on the, on the signs, is that right? On the, the flags and the signs?
I had referred the issue of the sign to Pete because I thought there might be a VNT issue.
Right.
He contacted DOT and he's gotten a response that the sign cannot be posted in the DOT right away.
Okay, and the flags.
And the flags.
Is that right? But I was talking to Rich and we, before we approved the flags for the trial last time, we had about a ninety-day delay while we checked with DOT and they gave us the go-ahead for those smart flags. So now there seems to be some conflicting information, so I guess they said they'll take them out. But we will, we'll confirm that before we get, get too excited. Going back to the, to the police, I, I forgot to mention, we had received last month a donation from the Dutch County Agricultural Society, an amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars to the village police department with a request that the money be earmarked for the police department and intended for use to support the specific needs of the department. So Andy, you probably from the, uh, from the fairgrounds dropped that off for us. So we thank the fairgrounds for, for working with us. We do provide an increased police presence during events at the fair, you know, that does come at a cost to the, to the village taxpayers, so we appreciate that donation. We have been talking, or I've been working with Pete on some numbers for our contracts with, we have a contract with the town and we also have, when we have special events, the costs associated with the, with the increased police presence and we're trying to delineate. Right now we have a flat fee, that's typically the same for an officer, whether they're in a vehicle or not. We're trying to establish, you know, like when we have center plus, we have ten officers, but we only have four cars. So not every, every officer, we can charge for the officer a one rate and an additional rate for those that would have a car. So we're working on that, working on that in the near future. Anybody got anything else under other business? Did we miss anything, Pat? Okay.
Do we have personnel things?
We do.
Meeting minutes?
Yeah. Minutes? Anybody got any additions to the, to the minutes? Corrections? So I'll make a motion to approve those as submitted for November twelfth. First of all, is everybody, is everybody at all meetings?
I was separate.
And I went through them. Which one? Start with November twelfth. Motion to approve. Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Twelve-two, you got that one, Sean?
I'm trying to see if I was here. Twelve-two.
Yes. Okay. Motion to approve twelve-two.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Twelve-eight? Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Where are we, at twelve-fourteen? Okay, last one. Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor of this?
Aye.
Okay. Personnel, we, we have two vacancies in the wastewater plant right now that have been posted, so for wastewater plant, wastewater treatment plant operator for training, we're accepting applications. And we also have a position open for a water equipment operator in the highway department, and that one has been posted to the public as well. I think two of them closed this Thursday, one the 15th. So, one motor, so far, yeah, one motor equipment operator and one of the wastewater treatment plant positions, applications will be closed on Friday at 4:00. Anything else? No?
Was there a certain date you want to hire, try to get somebody there?
I'll start interviewing when we get the applications.
Because he's leaving on...
Who's that?
Waste Ward.
Oh, Billy, he's leaving tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe Friday.
Yeah.
Do we have any comment from the public? We still got four. Anybody want to say anything? Okay. So, I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss contract negotiations and the employment history of individual employee.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.